Okay, you're all set.
Okay. I would like to call the meeting of the village board to order at 7:31 PM. Thank you to all who are in attendance for your time and talent and patience in advance. As, let's see, we have five members of the village board present. Trustee Moore, Aldo, and trustee Klor are excused for this evening. All legislators in attendance. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Meeting has been properly announced and posted at the board's salon.
Thank you. Item four, consent agenda items, is there a motion to approve the consent agreement?
Um.
There's second.
Second.
Motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Lynn, any discussion? Trustee Stokrane?
I want to call item eight, please.
Okay. Motion to approve consent agenda item with the exception of four A, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Items removed from the consent agenda for A, trustee Stokrane.
I just wanted to follow up, I had sent an email to manager Ewald about the bulletproof glass for the village court and the manager and also a desk for the court clerk, and I appreciate the response I didn't get back to you today. I just wanted to confirm, because the thought of bulletproof glass in front of here, I thought I'd better ask about that. But she indicates that it will not be glass up in front, although if it was a safety concern, I would be willing to listen to you entertaining that, but it's going to be in the desk, is that?
Correct, it's, the, the material itself is that in itself glass, I think that's a part of the name of the company of which it's provided for. It, it's actually a plate that goes behind, just drops in behind the wood on this desk. And that was the request of the municipal judge. If you're aware, earlier this year or last year, there was an incident in a municipal courtroom, and so one of the topics at the municipal judge seminar that's held on an annual basis in the state of Wisconsin was with regards to security in the courts. So our police department, as well as the court clerk and municipal judge did a walkthrough of this area, and we looked for some practical, low-cost solutions that would incorporate some more of those safety measures as it relates to this room.
And so let's be honest, if someone came in with a weapon and is only behind the desk, you're hoping someone would dump it?
In this circumstance, the municipal judge had suggested that in regards to what they had learned and been informed of at that conference, in conjunction with a review of the area by the police department. I don't stand in the opinion of, of what is enough or not enough, I'm sure that there's a lot of different things such as metal detectors and and pieces of equipment that we could put at all of the entrances into our facility. I think the conduct of their review, they were looking for some practical solutions that could be implemented.
And I would say at this time, if it's something that you would like to discuss further as a, as an, you know, this is part of the exceptions of accounts. I would recommend bringing it up as a future item for consideration, and we can see whether it's within the jurisdiction of our purview.
I just thought it was significant enough to bring up that I thought everyone should be aware of the things that we're looking at for public safety in our public spaces, so I will move to approve the presentation of accounts.
Motion to approve by trustee Stokrane, seconded by trustee Ursink, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Item six, public hearings, there are none this evening. Item seven, citizens to be heard, this item is for matters not on the agenda, there are no citizens in the courtroom this evening, is there anyone in attendance online?
No, there is not.
We have new business, item eight, eight A, considered charter ordinance number fifteen, requiring that the village president's appointments to the plan commission be confirmed at the village board. We have two members of the board missing this evening, asking this evening. I would recommend that we defer this item until all are present. If that, I'll take a motion for expression of support for moving forward.
Support, I support that.
I move that we defer to the next village board being item eight A.
Second.
Motion by trustee Stokrane, seconded by trustee Ursink, just clarifying village measures if possible for the next agenda item, okay.
Yes.
Perfect, I did that. Excellent, any further discussion? Hearing then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero, the item won't be deferred. Item eight B, considered bid request for exclusive access to the forty-four fifty North Oakland parking lot between the hours of eight AM and nine thirty PM, set a criterion on Friday, June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. This item comes to us with a memo, correct?
Correct.
And a email from director Henning.
Correct.
Are there any questions at this time or a motion to approve? Trustee Stokrane?
I just want to say first of all, I'll abstain, because at least my daughter wants to compete in the CBA, but I did have questions. That's a topic, come on, so. I was just wondering, I looked at the map from last year, and this was described, that area was described as a neutral zone, and I don't see anybody here. So were we already using that space?
No, in pre, in previous years, we've actually utilized North, or the bid has utilized the old North Shore Bank parking lot. That was to the east and the north of their building, but because of that property being under construction, they were in need of another staging area. So this, this, from my, at least to my knowledge in the years of the critterium, this location has never been utilized for purposes of the staging.
Well, obviously, the big question here is, you know, you're a resident, you pay while you're longer monthly, and then suddenly you can't leave your spot. I have a wonder how, it's, it's not particularly easy to get into anyway during the rates. Because they put the barricades up pretty early, as I understand it, is there any, we don't have a police. I just want, I just feel.
There's a back alley, I don't know.
Oh.
So there's.
You use that lot? Oh.
Yeah, so there's now that goes behind it, and then some people can access some of that back alley, and that's how they typically tell them to go, but a lot of that's already blocked off, so.
Yeah, pretty much you track the site.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's accessible, but.
But, yeah.
And so we're supposed to give them access to this lot for free? Is there no request for a fee?
Correct, this is not an item that I believe Nor could find documentation that has come before, the group before. So it's not something that's contemplated with regards to a fee, however, the bid submitted this at this point in time because they needed guidance on how to plan for the future of the event, which is coming up in June. So I encourage them to get a request in early than later, because of any required notice that we would want to provide to those permit holders, that you'll see is also a request of mine, within the scope of the memo. And then I'll also allow them to have ample planning time, should it not be permitted by the board.
I guess, I'm just thinking of, so they were using the North Shore Bank lot, which they, so PCV, whatever, what's that, PNC, there's another bank that's vacant. Is that not an option, so we can let the people who are renting the lot continue to have their access, but have they exhausted, like?
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, I don't know much, I haven't, I haven't talked to Chairman about any of this, and it doesn't seem like there are any other options laid out here, you know, I feel like there's going to be other options out there, and I don't even, you know, I'm, it's not even clear how much space the TOE needs for, for staging, I don't know if they need that whole entire parking lot, I don't know if that's been.
Yeah, I think I would, I would like us to stay focused on the request in front of us, if we choose to either defer to defer, because we need more information, or the motion fails, then we would take up giving direction to seek another location. But let's just focus on what's in front of us tonight, and if it's enough to go down, great, and then make a motion.
Yeah, one other question before I would make a motion is, have we communicated all to the building owner, or is that a public, that's our, that's our public lot?
Correct, it's a public lot. Director Henning was noticed at the meeting tonight and said that she'd be available to join us, I'm not sure, I'm sure something probably just came up. But no, we, it's a lot that the village owns.
And is there precedence for the village asking tenants or, you know, residents to not park any spaces, have we done some?
The other, the only other precedent we have really falls under a different section of the ordinance related to public improvements and maintenance of a lot. So for an example, Hubbard Park parking lot was redone in this last year, and we informed permit holders that we would not be issuing permits, that they'd been you know, suspended from that particular lot throughout the duration and finishing for construction, so that's routine, and we have the availability to do so in times of emergency or need with regards to the public infrastructure.
Was snow, can snow storage at River Park be another example?
Yes. Good, that's great, yeah.
Have they made it clear how much space they need in this lot, or do they need every single space on the lot?
I did not ask that question. The request was for the lot.
My question relating to that is, they requested exclusive access, it says on the request. Let's say there's a resident in there who doesn't move there, kind of hours out of town or something like that, are we interested in giving them tickets, so I mean, how are we going to get cars out of there?
We would handle that in the same manner that we handle vehicles on the street and on the race route, which does occur, so we have a procedure set in place with the police department that currently does go up and down the street and, if needed, toes.
Yes.
I just wanted to mention, on, on that point, if you look at the, if you look at the existing ordinance that allows, or I'm sorry, yeah, the, the existing policy where, where we rent spaces there, it doesn't actually contemplate twenty, being able to leave your car there for twenty-four hours. So it has to be out a certain amount of time during the day anyway, so generally that's going to be happening, and, and generally, the way that those, most of those municipal lots work is now that they're, they're rented by people that have apartments close by that don't have any additional parking, so they're leaving during the day for a job or whatever, and they're usually gone, and even if, and frankly, even if they weren't using this lot, with the race being held that day, you're probably going to have to get out of Dodge anyway, if you park in that lot, even if, even if it wasn't here, because you're not going to be able to get in an all-against-the-baricade, once they, once they finish the barricades. It's, you know, and that's why I think the fact that it's already contemplated as not twenty-four hour access, I think that the village has the inherent authority to say, you know, for the for the benefit of the municipality, you know, on this particular day, we're gonna, you know, we're going to be using the lot during these hours, and if it's, you know, that, that's that's not a significant enough burden to, you know, to, to breach the you know, any of the, the lease agreement or anything like that, or the rental agreement, we have the inherent authority to do that one way or another.
Interesting.
You know, I, I, I just have a feeling like, you know, in the long run, I will, you know, would be supportive of this, I, I think we're, you know, I just, part of me feels like we're getting to a point where we may start burdening our residents with our events, and I want to keep that kind of healthy event culture going here in Shorewood, and I think to approve something like this, without maybe a little bit further dialogue with Chairman from the bid, maybe Bill from the, from TOE, you know, I, I feel like, I would probably have been bigger deferring this until we have a little bit more information about what their needs are, and if there are any potential other spaces, or you know, if they reach out with residents, but I understand what, what you're saying, so I think we, you know, we have the rights to use that lot, I just don't want to further burden our residents and create a little bit more animosity and interview with these greater vast double play on, so.
Another option would be also to ask director Henning to find out if there if resident, if permit holders can temporarily park in, for example, the PNC bank or something like that, so. But, so what I hear is that you would like to defer, and then I think if you do make a motion as such, we need to be very clear about what information we would need to review. So, other? Yeah, trustee Lynn?
I agree with that, because really my concern is, you know, like you said, the permit holders can be offered in a second space. You know, if we can do that, great, and then second, I just want some clarity the request for exclusive access to the whole parking lot, I mean, do they need every single space in there? Or can they say, all right, you know, the first three quarters of it towards open is going to be ours, and then if there's a couple of cars in there, I don't want to dispose somebody's car, we couldn't get it out of there anyways because the criteria was happening. I mean, it just seems like a pretty steep price to pay when the criteria probably doesn't need every single space, so.
Trustee Stokrane, do we know what was the occupancy, overnight occupancy with permits for last, like, last Friday and June of last year, I mean, I'm just wondering how were we selling overnight permits, because that's, I think, the toughest part is the overnight permit people. Their last races at eight o'clock in New York, they have access until eight or nine o'clock.
Eight AM to nine, three PM.
Yeah, the last races at eight o'clock, so I'm just wondering, what's the occupancy, how many permits of that whole space are really renting out twenty-five percent on the last Friday in June?
Yeah, that data is not presented in our packet, so if somebody has it off the top of their head, but I prefer time to review that data.
I would mention that the, if you look at the ordinance, the off-street overnight is, permit is just six to six, so during the day, it's just two hour anyway, so the encroachment is about, it's only about three hours for the overnight.
Right.
Three and a half, three and a half.
Right, and they could presumably get in and explore, use those two hours in that space. But we don't need to, I, I mean, I guess what we're looking for is what information does the board need in order to consider this at a future date? Do you, are you making a request for that data, trustee Stokrane?
If I were voting on this, I would want to know.
Okay, great, that's right. What other information?
I think it'd be nice to know if there are other opportunities for these parking spots throughout the village, if somebody is in need, can they park somewhere else, I know that Walgreen, I know in Walgreen, Special Market, all are opportunities potentially, but is there any close to buy? How much space do they actually need, do they need the whole lot, or can they, can they take half the lot, so I think it's a space question, and alternative parking would be, I think, questions.
Anyway, Jan had mentioned that, and Bill, you know, so I think we're all kind of on the same page here, I think just a little clarity would go along with here, and then it's an easy yes, I mean.
Yeah, I agree, and then if there's anything, I, you know, I think Jan does a great job of this, but just like kind of communication to those permit holders about, about this event, just to get on top of it.
Do you want more communication or different communication than what she proposes in the email? It says at least sixty days in advance, and communication about race route and times, and then it seems like it's implied in the next line that they would be given alternatives nearby surrounding side streets, but there may be other.
We did notice, though, will we also put something up in the lot? Would that be, would we need to add something here?
Like every other temporary or regular restriction? Anything else, trustee Honor Draper?
No, I'm just looking at this, this does seem like I mean, the optimal location is based on logistics of the race, I do think that they probably would need to act, I mean, just reading what they need the space for, they would probably need full space, so, but I mean, there's an appetite for a little, you know, for the residents to understand that, you know, whether all options depending on, so they don't have an issue with that, but I think we're going to probably wind up in the same place.
Yeah. There you are.
I was, I don't know why I didn't think of this earlier, but there are really two groups of individuals here interested in how you're putting out, if you will, one is the two-hour parking that's available from the I'm sorry, okay, so there's, there's really two groups of people that you're kind of wondering about how they're going to be affected, one is during eight to six PM, that's the two-hour parking that's available. So that's really not an issue at all, but if I'm an off-street overnight parker, I have to be out by six AM from there in the morning. So, so really, the, the question becomes how are we affecting the overnight parkers, so theoretically between six and nine thirty, however, I don't know why I didn't think of this earlier, but if one of those overnight parkers came back, tried to come back to the lot, and the race was not using this lot at all, they still wouldn't be able to get back in there until after the race was over anyway, so we're not actually impacting anyone that's parking overnight any worse than just having the race period, because they have to be out by six AM. And even if we don't use this lot, they're not going to be able to get back into their lot until after nine thirty anyway, so I don't, I, I don't, there, there will be.
Not inconvenience someone who parks overnight unless they come in at six PM after.
Because even if we don't use this lot, just by the fact that the race is there, which has been every year.
It should be, we were just told you can get in because there's an entrance to this alley, and so you can get your car in.
I think late bluff is.
Right, block it.
I don't think.
I don't, okay, maybe I'm.
They have access to that lot.
You do?
They don't know if we do. I don't know if we do.
So perhaps what we need is a map?
Yeah.
It sounds like we need a map, because we, we are not in a position to do this.
Well, if they, they would have used it in the past, I think this is a more ideal location.
Well, it's right next door to where they
Right.
have been using, the staging has always been at that corner.
And I can remember in the past that it hasn't been a totally empty parking lot in American, I mean.
Right, so I don't think we're going to, if we need more data, I'm not comfortable with speculating and working from another. Respectfully, trustee Stokrane?
But I thought it would be lovely if they would engage in that, make a lot that is not paved and use that huge space. What's up?
Can, can switch.
Was that the lot you're, I just didn't know which lot you're referring to.
They are not interested in doing anything.
Like parking?
Nothing, oh god, no.
That would be another property owner, so you can make that request, it's in the minutes. Okay.
Is there a motion to defer?
You will cross? Sure, so in our motion, you'd like, you'd like the, the items that we've asked, information, can we say more information, and then do we need? We need to be specific.
We need a map, we need to know people can get in or out, a map, we need to know.
Would you like me to review the ones that I had written down? I mean, a toy, if you would like to, that's fine, I don't want to step in front of you, okay, all right. So I have first, you'd like a map to determine whether there's access to the lot. You want to know whether the bid has explored other alternatives such as Queensway, I'm sorry, not Queensway. Let's, know the dry, the old dry cleaning lot.
Corner of the area.
Thank you. And the PNC bank lot, or any other alternative. Are there other opportunities for alternate parking for these parking spots while the lot is in use? Do they need the entire parking lot, what are the specific needs? Will permit holders temporarily be able to park in the PNC bank parking lot? Clarity on what exclusive access means? Can parkers use some of the space? What were the number of permits active on this lot last June for daytime and for overnight?
That seems like it covers it, if you want to make a motion.
I think some of those are even.
They are, I will pare this down.
By the way, the alley is off Kensington, which is closed anyway for the race.
Oh, yeah.
You can't get in or out of there.
The alley is.
So there is no impact on overnight parkers that there isn't already.
Right, so do you still want to make a motion?
I, I, I would still, yeah, you know, let's, let's get the, the information, I think, I think we're all headed in that direction, but I think it'd be nice to get a little bit more of this.
So you can make a motion to defer until a point at which the requested information that was just assessed is available.
Okay, I have most of that noted, but then I started talking, so I might have missed a couple of steps, so I'm going to go ahead and, yeah, so. All right, so I'm going to defer the bid request for exclusive access to forty-four fifty North Oakland, or, the North Oakland parking lot between the hours of eight AM, nine thirty PM, the critterium on Friday, June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, until until the bid and bid or
The request.
The request, the, the permit requister can provide more information in regards to a map, a potential map to determine access to the lot, other parking alternatives, other parking opportunities, I think that's the same thing. If there's access to the entire parking lot, or, or partial, a partial part of the lot.
And data regarding permit sales for the month of June.
And regarding current sales for the month of June.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Ursink to defer, seconded by trustee Arno, for any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Question. Okay, I understand. And no, no opposed, so we have four yeses, and one exception, motion carries. All right, moving on to village reports of village officials, I have no report at this time, nine B, village trustees, any reports?
On a report that we were successful in getting the local advice ring up, and we were skating for a three or four days, and now it is less, a giant pool, so if you want to go swimming, we also have a new pool in town, and a fisherman. And the critterium, or the, the Shorewood Shell is still scheduled for February fourth this year, so fingers crossed, it gets cold. We're all skating that day.
You have anyone else? All right, nine C, village manager?
No report.
Excellent, a future items of consideration? Trustee Stokrane?
I have one, and I'm not sure if this is the, the correct place to go, but I'm just wondering, I was thinking about the citizens academy, and if there's any interest among the village board in restarting that, or village staff, or what would be if we are so inclined, I would support that, I did that in seventeen or eighteen, it was well attended. Don't ask me numbers, but I would just be interested in seeing what, how staff felt, and how other village trustees felt about it. It is a good way for people to become familiar with the way the village functions, without making a committee commitment or something like that, and so I, I just put it out there.
Would you like, are you requesting a a discussion or update on the status of the citizens' academy? What would that, what would the language of that?
Can I just, can I just provide an update now, because I don't think this merits a future agenda item of consideration. When the citizen academy was run, it was done every year, and then every other year due to attendance, attendance significantly, significantly declined in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty came pandemic, have not revisited that since that time, which I think was a, a good decision based upon different comfort levels. Should we bring it back, it would not, we do not have the availability to bring it back in two thousand and twenty-three, but could consider it in future years. But it declined and was not, and canceled specifically due to attendance issues, because it does require a significant amount of effort. The individual responsible for putting that on, in addition to staff effort, is through the village manager's office, with the assistant village manager, and then village manager and village clerk. So seeing as there is also transition within all. So seeing as there is also transition within all, you know, all those positions except for mine this year, we weren't in a position to do that or entertain it. So something that we can consider for the future.
Probably it's time to look at that would be initiatives for twenty twenty-four.
Correct.
Thank you.
All very helpful.
Trustee Lynn?
What about Strategic Initiatives Committee, maybe take a look at it some way?
Maybe if we needed to revamp it.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think that there, it needs to be, I mean, suggestions are welcome, but I, I don't really see a need to revamp what we have, what we have works well. I just think after a period of time, it ran so frequently that we realized it's not getting the participation it's desired. And that's not atypical for communities. Because at different points, you get different levels of interest, no differently than you'll see ebb and flow in participation of different committees, you know? So just something.
I will strongly consider making it a strategic initiative.
Trustee Lynn?
Thank you.
If you're sure.
I'm, I'm interested.
Any other future item? Great, is that, item twelve, adjourned, is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by trustee Lynn, second by trustee Ursink, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? We are now adjourned at eight oh two.
It would have been.
Aye.